Good evening and welcome to this Prior Lake City Council meeting of Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024. If you would, please stand. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good evening. It's so wonderful to see a nice full chambers this evening. First item on our agenda is the public forum. The public forum is that opportunity for those before us to come forward and comment and share with council anything that may be on their mind. The exclusion to that would be any item that would be related to a public hearing, either a public hearing that's been scheduled or for one that has taken place, that of course, the desire there is to aggregate testimony around the item to be decided upon. With that only preclusion, is there anyone who would like to come before us and speak this evening? Seeing none, I'd like to go ahead and move along to the approval of the agenda this evening. Counsel, are there any modifications? If none, I entertain a motion to approve as submitted.
So moved. Second, Bert Card?
Motion by Councilmember Braid, second by Councilmember Burkhart to approve that agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries, bringing us to approval of the January 9th, 2024 city council meeting minutes. Again, counsel, same question. Any modifications, revisions, changes? If none, motion to approve as submitted.
So move, Burkhart?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Burkhart, second by Councilmember Churchill to approve those meeting minutes as submitted. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that motion carries, bringing us to the consent agenda this evening. I'd like to hand that over to Manager Widdell to introduce consent agenda as well as those items we've forced this evening. Manager Widdell.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilors and members of the audience. So our consent agendas for those items that are considered routine or non-controversial, they're placed all together on the consent agenda. So unless a counselor asks for an item to be removed for separate consideration, they're all approved under a single motion and a second and a vote. If a counselor were to ask for an item to be removed for separate consideration, it would be placed under item 10 on tonight's agenda. So tonight, we have the following items on consent. Approval of the claims listing, approval of the Animal Control Services report from November of 2023, approval of the Animal Control Services report from December of 2023, approval of the December 2023 building permit summary report, resolution authorizing the ordering of the 2024 Police Department vehicles, resolution approving a work order for professional engineering services for water resource staff augmentation, Ponds Park declaration of deed restriction, resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of a new variable frequency drive for well number six, resolution approving a temporary liquor license for the Prior Lake VFW on February 2nd, 2024, and finally, a resolution approving the purchase of a Lucas CPR device for the fire department.
Thank you much, Manager Widdell. Counsel, are there any questions on those items? And if no questions, are there any items before some of the consent agenda that you would ask be removed and taken up under item 10 on our agenda this evening? If none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lake to approve the consent agenda, second by Councilmember Churchill. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Counsel, of those items we just approved this evening, are there any for which you would like to make comments? Seeing none, that brings us to item 6A on our agenda, which is honoring new hires to Prior Lake Police Department.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and our family and friends that are here today, thank you so much for spending your time. Counsel, city staff, thank you for your support. It's only because of that, from all of you, that awesome days like today are a possibility. A couple of weeks ago, I was at an airport just out east and on my way back here and was able to see something that kind of sets an awesome tone for tonight. I'm walking ahead in the airport, heading toward my gate. There's a family just ahead of me, I'm assuming a mom and dad and a little kiddo there, and there's a cop walking toward us. And this was a big guy, a monster human being in full uniform, and he had a rifle slung, as in our airports, kind of high-value targets, many officers do. So if you picture that officer coming toward us and the family's just ahead of me with their little kiddo, the kiddo breaks away from the mom and dad and runs toward this cop at what I'll just call a toddler dead sprint, runs to the cop, grabs on to his leg and kind of gives him, the cop, a bear hug. And at the exact same instant, as a smile's kind of coming across my face, this cop takes that rifle and slings it around his back and drops down to a knee and gives this little kiddo a big hug. He stands up, the kid gives him kind of a big thumbs up, and then the cop just goes right back on his way like nothing had happened. And the family themselves just kind of keep walking ahead. I found myself in that moment, super proud to do what I do, what our young officers here are being sworn in to do today. And in the same moment, it kind of hit me, this cop had no need to do this. It certainly is a little bit of an invasion of our space that we protect sometimes. And yet, in that moment, he had no focus on anything except taking just a split second to make this little kiddo the most important human being in the world, and deliver a level of service by putting that kid first. And it sets a tone. If you see our squad cars now, for the first time in roughly 30 or plus years, we have a new badge and new design on our squad cars. And in the back, very small footprint, it says, "People First and Mission Always." This officer, in that moment, one mission was to protect those in the airport, protect safe travel, and putting all of us first. And then, in a split second, his mission changed to putting this little kiddo first and a chance to put a very human face to this job. The mission changes minute to minute and second to second for our police officers here, both of whom, who we're going to swear in tonight, had experience and made the decision to come here to work for us. That mission might be comforting a little kiddo in the midst of a family domestic, it might be taking a report from a fraud for an elderly victim, and it might be trying to save their own lives tragically against an attack. That mission changes second to second. Their decision point, and this is why that mantra is so important for Prior Lake PD is, it explains how we do what we do, our decision model. What is the mission at hand, and then putting people reasonably first for that mission. Our two officers tonight are signing on to wear our shield. They're about to take the oath in just a minute to always live that decision. What is the mission at hand, and then put people first to accomplish that mission. And as their chief, I'm incredibly proud that they've chosen to do it in this agency. Our two officers here who are about to take the oath of office, I want to explain just a little bit about them to you. There's family in the audience here, and I have to point this out. The stepdad of one of our officers, who I just found out about two months ago, is someone I graduated high school with. So now, I'm setting the tone for my own age, where our officers now are the children of people that I started in this world with, which I take that I've earned this gray here, and Craigwood also, I would assume. We're incredibly proud to work them, all two officers here, shields number 66 and 67. And just for everyone in the audience, how you know this will go, we'll go through a little bit of bios, we'll do their swearing in, I'll hand them their shields, and then we'll call up family to pin the shields on one by one, if that makes sense. Before we pin these on, I want to make clear to our new officers, what we're about to put on you is this little piece of metal. This weighs two and a half ounces. It's about the same weight as maybe a dozen nickels, if you're old enough to know what we used to use to pay for things for, maybe the weight of your cellphone. The weight of this in actual ounces, though, is completely meaningless. And yet, what is incredibly powerful and immeasurable is the weight of the impact you can have on a daily basis to our citizens. This shield means nothing unless they make a decision that they need and want you to do what you do. And so, I'll remind you, as I go through your bios and then we take the oath, to understand this shield has nothing to do with power, but it has to do with influence and impact. And that's a decision you'll make every day. How do you want that impact to be? And do you understand how incredibly valuable it is to the citizens and to your families and friends and to our staff that you make an intentional choice to earn that every day? Shield number 66 for Robert Hurd. Robert is a native of Seattle, Washington, but made the decision to move around the states a bit before landing here for family, or now calling Minnesota as home. We were able to steal him from Albert Lee, which we have made clear, we're an agency that will steal the very best from anywhere in this country, if we possibly can. I make no apologies for that. Robert talks about enjoying working with the community, meeting different people every day. And specifically, I think it's important, he points out that one of the reasons they moved here was for his daughter, special needs, a child dealing with a rare genetic disease that only one in 100,000 children face. And the reason I point that out is because I want Robert and his family to know that you now have an extended or a much extended family willing to support you and your family and everything they deal with. And he talks about the journey being different than many others, but thankful to be here. Being in law enforcement and a career that not only challenges him, but allows him to make that positive impact. And we're proud that he speaks of joining a department that prioritizes not only its officers, which is where we need to start, but the community as a whole. Robert Hurd will be shield number 66. For Ryan Ilaski, someone we were, again, very proud to steal from a very close partner of ours here, that we work well with, that being our conservation officers. Grew up in law enforcement with dad being a now-retired police officer for the city of Edina for nearly 30 years. Growing up in Prior Lake and attending Prior Lake schools, a homegrown asset here. Attending Rasmus in college, and then being a city, a police officer for five years for the city of Wells, before moving to conservation with SMSC, and now here. Again, an officer, we're very proud to call one of our own. So, Officer Hurd and Officer Ilaski, what I'll ask you to do is to raise your right hand, and if you would, you can repeat after me. I'll have you take one step forward, if you Gentlemen, I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and the ordinances of the city of Prior Lake, and that I will faithfully perform and discharge the duties of a police officer. I will never betray my shield, my integrity, my character, or the public trust. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions, so help me God. Ladies and gentlemen, shields number 66 and 67, Robert Hurd and Ryan Ilaski. Okay, starting with Robert, if I'm correct, your wife Linda will be the one pinning your shield on. So Linda, if you'd like to come on up. And Ryan, your wife Taylor and son Easton to pin your shield. To our family, our friends, our elected, and our citizens, these are your two newest police officers for the city of Prior Lake, Robert Hurd and Ryan Ilaski. Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
So, counsel, if we can, we'll go ahead and take a brief recess for photos here at 7:15. Meeting is in recess.
For family, for family and friends, the council's going to come back into session. We would love for you to join us next door for some cake and some coffee, if you are free. So our officers will head you or lead you out that way while we finish here for council. So, thank you very much.
Would like to bring the meeting back into session at 7:24. We have item 6B on our agenda this evening, which is a presentation with the police and fire updates. Chief Steinhaus, we look forward to your presentation.
Can you guys see it on your screens? Yeah, it works. It works. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for having me tonight. We'll be going over our quarterly update from September to December of 2023. Let's see here. So, little update on where we're at right now, with the nine firefighters and three captains, the addition there of 12. And then, we're actually at 25 firefighters. It was another typo on my end, and I found another one, too, that I'll get to on the next page. But we did have a retirement back in December of 23. Mike Kilnowski retired after 19 years. He served as a firefighter, a captain, and a deputy chief. So he's enjoying the non-pager life, we like to say. So, we congratulated him, and we miss him. So, where we're at right now, so, this is kind of going back from our previous presentations. So, we're still at that 49% number at the end of the year for our response times. Now, that response time, to get away from the confusion, is our turnout time all the way to scene time. So that's, the page comes out, our in-route time. So going from the station to the scene and checking out on scene have dropped by 40, 49%. So that's a big number for us, and we're very proud of that. So, on-scene times, six minutes and 45 seconds, that's that 49%. What's important to know about that number is that's a mitigating piece of equipment. So that's an engine on scene in six minutes and 45 seconds. So fires, there's a hose. If extrication is needed, there's tools, so on. So that used to just be me. That was my number. And then I'd wait another six, seven, eight, however long, minutes for that piece of equipment to get there. So, that's a big change for us and a huge relief for me, I'll tell you. So, 30 education, public education events in our time period from July 2nd to December 31st. Last year, in that time period, I looked today, I kind of figured it out a little bit. We did three. So, it's a big difference with our, with our staff being able to handle that stuff. As I said earlier in our, in our work session, the preliminary site inspections, that number is wrong, clearly. So 41 is our number there. And again, that was something we've never been able to do before. So, and then our new fire and EMS training, education training has been implemented and moving forward. So, we're happy about that. So our statistics from September 1st to December 31st, this includes Credit River, Spring Lake, and Prior Lake. So our fires are always staying about the same. Medical emergencies, obviously, an increase from 22 to 23 in that time period, and then motor vehicle accidents, a little climb, but not a, not a big change. Then, January 1st to December 31st, that's from the, did I do that right? I might have backed that up. Yeah, so, I don't know if the dates are right there. So, September 31st, or September 1st to December 31st? I believe. Yeah, so, this is the fires, emergencies, medicals, and our motor vehicle accidents. So, again, medicals have that, have that larger number from the previous year. Total service from Prior Lake, Credit River, Spring Lake, and, and Prior Lake altogether, September 1st to December 31st again. So you see, total calls were 535, up quite a bit from, from the previous year. And again, that's due to our medical response. And then last, our total calls, January 1st to December 31st of 2023, 1,119 calls was our total for all districts, up quite a bit from, from our number in 2022. So with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none. Chief, thank you so much for your presentation this evening.
Have a good night.
You as well, sir.
Mayor, members of the council, appreciate the opportunity to update you from the PD side of things. And I think that total calls or service would still be for fire, so I'll collect here. Overall, for our personnel update, I have no would to knock on here. However, I would if I could, as of today, we made our final offer to our police commander candidate that has accepted, and that will mean, at the moment, we are at full staffing. If you have something you can knock on, I'd appreciate it, given how personnel goes in today's environment. So we are at full staffing. With the promotions we just had, that leaves us with one officer currently in FTO. And once that officer is at, or I'm sorry, is off of FTO, we'll actually be at our full complement for sworn in terms of actually out providing service on the So you would have PD response, fire response, and then the third leg of that being ALINA and our ambulance service. EMS is going to be a topic of discussion with our legislature at the state this year, so I think providing some information to our residents, and so they can see how much time ALINA is spending in town, how many calls they're going to. So adding that to our quarterly presentations is something that we anticipate bringing to the council moving forward.
Manager Waddell, thank you so much for your comments, because I would actually suggest, and obviously I'm going to look down the dais for support from council, you know, the aspect of taking a look at these reports, overall public safety, you know, as I know, our medical response, police so often is the first, first safety officer on scene. Then fire comes in, right? And now we have EMT professionals there, which frees up some capacity, which to me provides a higher level of assurance for me as a citizen of Prior Lake, knowing that if an event takes place at my household, that not just the speed with which, but also the level of training preparation. And seeing that in our reports, whatever that might look like, without it, right, being a monumental exercise in how we slice our data. But the whole aspect of, we have a singular ambulance provider in our community that serves, well, our Credit River partner in fire, what their response times are, what their calls for service are in our community, I think our citizens should see those on a quarterly basis. And I am hopeful that that is not added work for either of us, but rather ALINA, this information is being requested on behalf of our community, and to the extent with which council further supports that. But also, what we see on these reports, to your point, needs to be relevant to the things that we're hearing from our community. So, you know, Manager Waddell, if you undertake a review of what we have, and maybe some mockups, what we might see in three months for the first quarter of 2024, and a new look, how we see this information, I think could be wonderful for us.
Yes, sir. If I could, Mr. Mayor, I think that's an excellent conversation. Chief Steinhaus and I have discussed it, and I think what that might afford an opportunity is for council, for public safety department, has to speak on what the context behind those numbers is, that as with any metrics, that becomes very important. It's easy to see a number and accept that as is. The context and nuance behind it is nuanced and would be quite important. So certainly would look forward to being able to start that discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, that brings us to our council member liaison updates. And if I could, direct us to council member Lake. Council member Lake.
Yes, Mayor and counselors. On January 12th, I attended the scale general meeting. And on January 19th, I had my agenda review. And on January 20th, I attended the Dave Cromie retirement at VFW.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Councilmember Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. On the 10th, I attended the Chamber of Commerce board meeting. On the 12th, I went to the scale general meeting. On the 18th, I had my CEC meeting. The 19th was my agenda review, and today I had the local advisory council on mental health meeting.
Thank you, Counselor Churchill. Councilmember Burkhardt.
Mayor, members of the council, on January 11th, I had Highway 169 quarter coalition board meeting. On January 19th, my agenda review. On January 20th, I attended the retirement analysis for Dave Cromie. On January 22nd, Minnesota Valley Transit Association Management Committee meeting. And also wanted to give a happy birthday to Senator Eric Pratt, who turned 60 today. Congratulations, Senator.
Boy, there was a lot of information delivered there. Councilmember Bray.
Mayor, members of the council, on 116, the Prior Lake Spring Lake Watershed had a meeting. And on 119, I attended my agenda review.
Counsel, my update is attended the municipal legislative commission legislative breakfast on the 12th of January, along with Manager Waddell. Attended the Martin Luther King Day annual event, now the third year at the high school in partnership with the Rotary Club and the school district and city Credit River and Spring Lake Township. Great event. And also enjoyed the commemorating the Dave Cromie Day in Prior Lake at the VFW on the 20th of January. Manager Waddell, is there anything you'd like to add?
Mayor, I have nothing further to add this evening. Thank you.
With that.
I would move to adjourn.
Second. We have a motion to adjourn by councilmember Churchill and a second by councilmember Bray. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. We adjourned at 7:43.